To no law. As Chairperson of the Amherst School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. In accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously watch and/or listen to the meeting on Zoom and via phone by following the directions and links provided on our website, www.sau39.org. We have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email A Wallace, that's A W A L L A C E at sau39.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we'll be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Finally, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where you are and if anyone else is in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to no law. So let's get started with Tom.
Gothier is in his home office alone.
Okay. Josh, I'll go for you.
Hi, I am in a parked car alone on top of Project Mountain.
In the dark, apparently.
Yes.
And Terry.
I'm not nearly so exciting. Beam alone in my home office.
And I am home and alone in my room. We sound like a sad group of individuals. Every time I hear "and alone," I always feel so bummed. Anyway. So let's get started with our meeting. We will start by opening up the floor to the public for public comment. If any member of the public is interested in speaking, please use the raise your hand feature to address the board. Give it just a moment. Okay. Seeing no members of the public raising their hands, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which was originally termed deliberative options discussion, where I was going to be notifying any member of the board. They may not be able to attend deliberative in person what their options were, but given the information that Adam just shared with us and the executive or emergency order assigned by the governor, it's Emergency Order 83, we have been granted the ability to actually change voting day to either April, May, June, or July. It is required to be the second Tuesday of either one of those months. As mentioned earlier in the day, I met with all of the other board chairs, the, all of the moderators for every single school board, as well as both town for, you know, Amherst and Mount Vernon, the, a couple member, or one member of the Amherst Board of Selectmen, the Mount Vernon Board of Selectmen, as well as our council and I believe, Amherst Town Council was there. So it was a very large meeting where we just kind of hashed out what the options were, where everybody was leaning on this. It was an overwhelming opinion that we should postpone now that we are able to. And when it came to the discussion on the date, we could postpone as late as July, however, pretty much everybody has already started their fiscal year at that point, and it was felt that postponing to after the fiscal year has already started just makes things extra difficult. So we decided June was the best way to do it. That will give us a deliberative date of May 4th. We had discussed doing a Saturday option where we just kind of, you know, made use of Saturdays outdoor time daylight in stacking them back to back, but it, you know, through discussions, it was felt that, especially for Amherst residents, that was a lot. So we are going to go to the, our typical day schedule, you know, evening schedule. We'll find out, we'll work through more details as we get closer of exactly how we're going to pull off deliberative when we come, but our deliberative date will be May 4th, which is a Tuesday evening. So, Tom, I know you had a question about something involving this.
And I have a lot of questions and a lot of opinions on it, but my first question was, I had asked Adam about hiring teachers, postings, et cetera, and he explained that they're going to, you know, make contingent hires essentially. We can't make contingent technology purchases. So if this budget passes, or if you guys in the district decide to cut something else out to make room for those computers that we need, how can we order those by June to get them in by September when we are still facing a shortfall as of right now?
Christine.
In terms of not only in the school, but just nationwide in terms of actually getting laptop supplies? Is this something that we can even do for next year if we start that late?
So we probably could not start that late. So what we would need to do would be to look at what that timeline is. Brian actually reached out to us recently, updating us on the timeline. We had recently ordered some computers. So we're looking at when those are arriving and we're getting updated information for when those will arrive, and they're delayed further. So we do have some concerns about being ready for September. What we, we have a few options for how we might handle that. One thing we could do is, you know, look for a board motion to be able to pre-purchase some of those items, or we could be looking to use unassigned fund balance for that, or we certainly could look to place the order and create, we can create a purchase order pretty soon for next year. So we could be ordering it with next year's purchase order, just knowing that if for some reason the budget didn't pass, we would still need to make sure that those technology lines were funded. So wherever our default might be, we would need to find a way to make sure that we're still able to, you know, order that technology and to be able to, you know, whatever we've ordered, that we, we have a way to be able to pay that. And I think that no matter what, if we were in a default, we would be looking at, you know, we might need to look at what lines we would be targeting to reduce and making sure that we're not reducing in areas that we're looking at placing orders for.
Okay. Are we going to host that meeting outside on May 4th if we can? It'll still, it'll probably be lighter for a while. Can we make use of the lights at the high school? Because my concern with this is that it just, it pushes it down the road. We don't have the school project on the ballot this year. So I think our major contentious issue is, is out of the picture now. So I know I'm not a huge fan of pushing this back, but if we're going to do it, we might as well be outside because that's our big concern now. We can't do that in February, so certainly in May we must be able to do that.
It was, we had talked about being able to do it outside. Obviously, there was the question of rain and things like that. We were advised that as long as the initial date is sometime within that Saturday to Saturday, not including the Sunday timeframe of that first week of May, if there was rain that had to push us to a different day or push a few of us that are booked during that week to a different day that might go into the next week, then we are okay. Because there are actually legal timeframes of when deliberatives have to be held. They have to be held in the first week. Anyway. So there is that, but we do, we're talking about either renting or using the tents that are available at other sites in the schools right now. But, you know, we'll need to deal with some technology for the week as well and stuff like that. Because, you know, if we do it outside. So there was definitely discussions about outside.
Where does the budget come from for that? Because you're going to need, you know, a different technological system than you have inside the theater at South Heagan. Where do the funds go to pay for that? Is it SAU? Is it each individual school district? Because that's not going to be cheap necessarily to get some of this equipment, knowing that other venues and other districts are probably going to be thinking the same thing.
It would, so the way I understood it, because of the way we're stacking it, because we specifically talked about stacking and, you know, keeping them closely together, it would obviously come from each of our individual budgets. And then we would share the cost. So we would rent it for a couple of days, and then we'd share the cross, we'd share the cost between the Board of Selectmen, South Heagan, and us.
If no one else has a question, I have another one. Are we able to, not, are we able to, is the window of adding or deleting things or changing, is that all still officially closed now after the public hearing? Or does this open up another three months where we can change language on something? We can reanalyze a budget if we wanted to because of, you know, continued, you know, concerns for all this stuff? Are we able to use that time to change things? Or are we locked in on everything that we agreed on at public hearing now?
Just like always, we can, after a public hearing, we can always go down on the quantity of what we do. We can't really add, you know,
Yeah.
in that we haven't presented, but we're allowed, you know, we are able to reduce, you know, lower the cost of something. Let's say we want to ask for $200,000 for the capital reserve fund instead of five, or we want to reduce the budget, we're just not allowed to ask for more than we've already presented.
On the overall budget or in individual categories? So for example, if we said, you know, it's going to cost us an extra $25 to expedite computers, now we need 160 in technology. Are we able to do that and take 20 grand from something else? Or each line item capped off at what it is at public hearing?
It's actually always the overall budget quantity.
Okay, that's what I thought, but.
Yeah, yeah, not the specific line items. So, Josh, I know you're in a little bit more difficult. Do you have any questions about this?
I don't. Theoretically, I will be, you know, from my perspective personally, I'll be fully vaccinated by then. So that's a bonus. But no, I, I think, especially given that we are coordinating with multiple groups, I think it would be, you know, I think it is what it is. And so we move forward, and I think Tom's right. We should, if, if there's a reason to reconsider something, we have the time for whatever reason. For example, if we wanted to consider lowering the capital investment in order to take some UFV for computers because we're concerned about that, then that should be a discussion we have. But I think ultimately, I think this is, you know, this is what we are doing. So I don't really have any other concerns that Tom hasn't already touched on.
Okay. Terry? Do you have any?
I think the thing with line items is you just need to make sure that you've got a line item, if there's anything that you know you want to be able to spend something on. But the amounts are always a bit flexible anyway, because things come up that you don't know and what have you. You just can't have it not in there at all. It has to have at least a dollar and be in there, and we can't come up after the fact and say, oh, there's something brand new in the budget. So I think that we do have flex, some amount of flexibility within it.
Yep. Yeah. Um, so, yeah, we have all of that to take into consideration. So I, there is actually a specific motion that was sent to me for this. So if everybody's all good, yeah.
I just asked one more question. Are we still keeping the same procedures in May and then in June for absentee, drive-up voting, you know, remote presentations for deliberative? Are we still doing all those same mechanisms that we were going to do next month and then in March?
So, um, drive-up.
Voting stuff is allowed, the absentee ballots are allowed. I saw the Governor's Executive Order, but in terms of deliberative, I guess it's probably more for deliberative than anything. Are we still going to operate in the same rules we are now? Because to me, it just asks a further question, why did we kick the can down the road if we're going to have to do the same things anyway, but?
A lot of it, so we have the ability to still do those options. I think that deciding today on exactly the setup of the room, exactly what location outside, you know, all of that, I think today is a very difficult situ, time to decide because who knows what could happen between now and May. But we will continue having those discussions. We know that those options are available to us. And we can work out the details of exactly how things will work as we get closer to that May date.
We're just not locked into anything. We just have the option now of still doing, we have that flexibility then.
Correct. And the, you know, one of the things that definitely came up in today's meeting about moving the date is it will get, it allows for a lot more people to be vaccinated, to be fully vaccinated before deliberative. Because right now, the, the window, especially for the 65 and over group of residents, they will only have had an opportunity to maybe get one shot. And even that wouldn't have had an opportunity to take effect before the deliberative next week. So moving it to May was, that was definitely one of the things that was taken into consideration and discussed was more people vaccinated. So it's a safer situation. Whether it's still, whether we still keep it inside, just because it ends up being, you know, three weeks straight of rain, we still have more people vaccinated. So, all right. So the motion is, can I have a motion that per Emergency Order Number 83 dated January 22nd, 2021, to move the annual meeting process to a first session, AKA deliberative session, date to May 4th, and a voting day on Tuesday, June 8th, 2021, with a time and specific location of the first session to be determined by the time it is posted at least 14 days prior? Thank you, Christine. And Danae, I will send that exact wording to you as well. So Christine just posted exactly, in case it wasn't super clear. So you guys have a chance to read. I'd like a motion and a second on that, and then we need to vote.
I, I will motion. Do I have to read it again, or can I just say that?
What I said. Can I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Tom, okay, roll call, Tom.
Gothier, yes.
Terry.
Beam, yes.
And Josh.
Uncle Lynn, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. Okay. So we have that. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee Discussion. Everybody was either at, or I believe watched, the last JFAC meeting. JFAC has asked for us to have a basically a resolution so that they know what our plans are for the, you know, for the future. And they would like a voted on resolution versus just a verbal from each and one of us individually stating it. So I have Josh sent a recommendation for a resolution that I am happy to read as well as post for everybody to review and discuss. But if anybody has a different resolution, that is fine as well. Okay, so I just posted it in the chat. It reads, "At the most, at the most recent Amherst School Board meeting on January 19th, the Board voted not to bring forth, for public consideration, a warrant article to fund a new elementary school, elementary and renovated middle school this year. It is the full intention of the Board to put a bond proposal of similar scope, design, and timing on next year's ballot, and we look forward to fully engaging the public along with our administration and other community experts on the real and immediate need for facilities funding in our town." Um, so while you guys read through that, I did want to say that I have talked to Amy, who will also be talking to Shannon, at our meeting in two weeks. They will both be coming, and I have an agenda item on the schedule for us to actually discuss a little bit more of the Board's role in the education of the community in this. Shannon and Amy will be presenting us what the current JFAC PR plan is slash was. Obviously, there was some modification because of the timing. And then as a Board, we can discuss with them, you know, additional thoughts that we have, how we can integrate into that plan and things like that, the timing and stuff like that. So it's just, it's going to be more of a discussion at our Board meetings. And then Amy and I discussed the desire to have some more joint working sessions with JFAC, where we work together to work through some of this. So just so everybody knows that this is some of that. So this is just more of a, you know, tonight is less about creating an actual plan because we have time for that. This is just letting JFAC know what our future plans are for this specific warrant article. So, does anybody have any questions, thoughts, anything?
The other thing I'd say about that is I think we need to work in there that it is our hope goal, I'm not sure what the word is, but that we will continue working with and utilizing the experience of the JFAC group to, in order to do this. Because I don't think we can do this without them. They've had the expertise on this, and, you know, they've been involved in it. We've been more on the periphery, at least, you know, two of us haven't been, you know, certainly Ellen's been involved. I've been involved in it, but, you know, the actual getting down to do the PR work, you know, it's not enough against you guys, but two out of the five of us have been involved in it on a more granular basis. So I think that we still need them. They have the knowledge there, and I think that, you know, without them, this would be incredibly difficult for the five of us to put together, so.
I agree.
Implied under community experts, but I agree it should be spelled out. Or we could even add a sentence about working cohesively kind of hand in hand with JFAC.
So I can just create a really nice run-on sentence that just says, "Fully engaging the public along with our administration, other community experts, including JFAC, on the real and immediate need for facilities funding in our town." I can do that, or we can word it differently.
I'm good either way, so long as they're specifically mentioned.
Yep.
And I think.
No, go ahead, Terry.
Instead of next year's, I would also specifically say the, you know, what year it's going to be. Like right now, we are, we are what? We are putting on the ballot the 2022 budget, so it would be in the 2023 or whatever, how?
I would just say, you know, similar scope, design, and timing in the 2022 ballot period, you know, in conjunction with the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee, we look forward to engaging the public administration and, and fully engaging the public on the real and immediate need for our facilities funding in our town.
Oh, there you go. I think that was a nice way around it.
All right.
Excuse me.
Look forward to fully engaging the public.
All right.
Did you take out along with our administration and other community, community experts, or did you keep that?
I don't feel like we're, we have to educate the public, but I don't know that we're educating the administration, so to speak.
Okay, so you removed.
I said after the, putting in the timing on next, on the scope, designing timing on the 2022 ballot period, "In conjunction with the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee, we look forward to fully engaging the public." You can put administration in there, that's fine. Public and administration on the real and immediate need for our facilities funding in the future.
Perfect. Okay. Yep.
Sorry, it's harder to workshop from a car.
Hey, when you can't see it.
Yeah, when I'm literally in the dark. But, but I agree, I think I like the changes. I, you know, my, my goal was to generally call them out by, by using community experts, but I do think explicitly calling them out is better. I guess my thought with the administration wasn't that we were educating them, but, you know, hopefully administration will be helping us. So I was including them in the, you know, people who will be educating others. But if we just want to get rid of it or whatever, I'm, I'm fine with that as well.
Yeah, maybe just say, "In conjunction with the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee, we look forward to fully engaging the public along with our agents and other community experts on the real and immediate need." So just after a 2022 ballot, end that sentence and say, "In conjunction with JFAC, we look forward," and then just taking the rest of it from there. It's generally changing eight or 10 words in the center of it.
Okay. So I wordsmithed that. I will send this over again, especially for Josh, but.
I think, I think it's definitely an all-in thing, but that we, we want to make it very clear that they are our partners in this, that it's not all them, it's not all us, but we're very much partners.
Correct.
That is the intent, at least.
All right. So do you guys read through, make sure that I did this correctly?
JFAC, all those letters should be capitalized. Joint.
Yes.
The J F A C.
I will do that when I send that over to Danae.
It's fine for me.
I was typing quickly. All right, so that looks good?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so this is a resolution. But I think resolutions may, or work the same as a typical vote. So if somebody would like to make a motion to accept this resolution?
Yeah, okay, before I do that, can I recommend one extra thing?
Sure.
That we, that we report out kind of the progress on a regular basis. So just like we have added a couple other important things, goals over time, where we specifically add them to our agendas, should we be committing to saying, hey, we're going to give updates in our public meetings on a regular basis?
Is that, I'm not saying I disagree.
It is a question, not a, it's, it's a thought. It doesn't have, I support it as is, but I'm wondering if we just want to add that to keep ourselves honest.
I wonder if, I'm not saying I disagree, because I'm not sure, like, I, I'm not strong either way, but I'm also wondering if something like that is more specific to part of our actual hardcore or, you know, the, the plan that we actually work through at our next meeting in two weeks.
Yeah, I think that's just more, it's, that's a general mechanical update that we do every month. You know, any sort of outreach that we have and the execution of the plan with the joint, with the JFAC, the PR plan. In March, if we do this, we're going to be reporting on that, or they can report back to us. I don't know that needs to be in there, but it is something to make sure that we, you know, continue to report on in our meetings every month.
I don't know if it has to be every month, but I just want us.
As things happen, sorry.
Yeah, to hold us to something to where, that we all know what's going on, but like we, we for real make it a public thing and that we make that commitment that it's a public thing that we're saying, hey.
Can you make sure, Terry, to bring that up on the 8th?
I will.
Thank you. Just so, because we're going to be like making a list, so make sure you bring that up then. All right, so is everybody okay with it this way? All right, can I have a motion to accept this resolution?
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay, Terry's, Tom motioned, Terry seconded. We'll roll call Tom.
Gothier, yes.
Terry.
Beam, yes.
Josh.
Uncle Lynn, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. Okay, so that was it. We do have a non-public that popped up at the very last moment. But we are ahead of time, and we had a lot of people join the call at the last second. So I'm actually going to call for a second public comment. So if any member of the public would like to use the digital raise your hand feature, please raise your hand now for public comment. Okay. Seeing none, can I have a motion to go under non-public, under R S A? Oh, man, it's not written down, so 91. Colin.
For staffing? I should have pulled it up, I apologize.
No, that's, it's all good. I'm like, I got this.
I'll see if I can find it. While you take the motion, and then we can say, after which it is.
Got it. So night, we're going to go into non-public under R S A. Got it. So night, we're going to go into non-public under RSA 91A colon 3. It is a Roman numeral two. C, matter C. So if anybody would like to make that motion, that'd be great.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public under the aforementioned clause or RSA.
Thanks. Second?
I'll second.
Josh, so let's roll call Tom.
Go through, yes.
Terry?
Beam, yes.
Josh?
Conklin, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. So if all members of the public could please leave the meeting? Okay, thank you. Can you stop recording and?
Only broadcast from, so it's fine.
All right, we are back in public. It is 6:41. And can I have a motion to accept the retirement that was presented to the Board tonight?
A motion.
Terry, second? Tom, roll call Josh?
Unklin, yes.
Terry?
Beam, yes.
Kuzma, yes. Oh, sorry.
He missed out.
I went backwards. So I forgot who I called on. That was.
You got to do what Steve did. You get tricky.
I, and I don't have a list. I just go by the things. So, all right. So it is 6:41. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
A little motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
And roll call Tom?
Go through, yes.
And Terry? Josh?
Conklin, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. Meeting is over.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Have a good night.